Well, colleagues.
Wait, wait.
What do you need?
Something that Jane wanted me to read.
It's on my truck.
Why don't you run out and get it? Can we wait? We have to, Abden forgot something in his truck.
One sec, guys. No, but we stream. So it's not live stream. It shows on.
He's coming right back. He forgot something in his truck.
Oh, he did.
Our film.
Something Jane needed to read.
Me too.
I like. It's for all the people who can't sleep at night. Many, many people watch it at night.
Everybody in Hannaford who comes up to me and says, "I know you. You're the town manager in Waldaborough."
Yeah. Because they watch this stuff on LCTV. But why are they, are they from Waldaborough?
Some aren't.
So why are they watching?
My neighbors across the creek. I'm walking, I'm doing my walk at night, and I walked down a road right near me that I had never walked down before because I thought it was private and they wouldn't like it. But I walked down it and they, I start talking to these people with the dog and she's like, "You're the town manager from Waldaborough?" And I was like, "Yes, I am." And she's like, "Oh." I'm like, "Well, where are you from?" She's like, "Here." I'm like, "Why would you be watching our meetings? You're from Nobleboro."
Unless you were reading the Lincoln County News.
No. She told me she watches our meetings. She finds me entertaining.
Who you are.
Kind of. At times.
It's the 11th of June.
It is.
Select Board meeting in Waldaborough, Maine. And we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Both born and unborn.
Okay. We have no public hearings this evening, so I'd like to get right down to it and invite Jody Jones, the MidCoast Conservancy Executive Director, to join us and tell us about MidCoast Conservancy.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to join you this evening. I have 10 minutes and I'll try to be very brief, but I want, I'm here to just thank you for being a conservation partner of MidCoast Conservancy and talk to you a little bit about what we are up to in the town of Waldaborough and in the watershed. I'm going to put this down because it's too big. So we are located in Edgecombe and we just recently merged with the Madomic Valley Land Trust in January. And we are thrilled to have them be part of our team. It's really going to enrich us with the staff and the volunteers and to adopt the watershed of the Madomic Valley, which I'm learning about and finding to be a wonderful resource. Since January, some of the things that we've been doing and are continuing to doing from what Madomic Valley had been doing, we're doing two things primarily is working on water quality with many of you and we're doing some work in your middle school. Under water quality, we're part of the task force that you are all aware of. We're also working to, with the Madomic River watershed management plan with FB Environmental for Review, and that's part of the task force work as well. And we're working with your town manager, Julie, in applying for grants where applicable, especially 319 money. This is Clean Water Act money and it can provide tens of thousands of dollars for the town of Waldaborough to fix problem erosion areas, can help infrastructure, and it can help assure sedimentation that's contaminated doesn't flow into the beautiful Madomic River. So we're excited about that opportunity as well. We're also received, we're, some funding to map farms in the area. Farms are a wonderful resource for the community and also can, we can work with farmers at their request. We're going to provide some information to help provide, improve their farming practices and that will also help improve the water quality of the area. And we provided support to the town of Washington, which is not in Waldaborough, but is in our watershed here, to apply for a stream crossing grant. And that was submitted on June 3rd and that's for the amount of, I think about $95,000, also to protect the Wald, the Madomic River from non-point source pollution, which is pollution that comes from all of us. We are continuing to identify and provide volunteers for you, Julie, and, and working on that for Route 17 and Route 1, identifying beaver dams and recording them. We're not really doing the heavy lifting. Julie is really doing a lot of that, but we're trying to get.
Well, we're going to do the kayak trip shortly.
Shortly, yes.
Because we're finally warm enough that if we flip over, it won't be so bad.
Yay. Hooray. And in the future, we want to develop a plan for the entire Madomic River. So we're pretty excited to be part of your community and to be working together. We're also, I have a list of, the C grant, a list of grants that we're working on. The first one is an existing grant for about $4,800 and some change that we're going to be using to help fund some of your projects. You're just submitting a bill and then we'll pay for that, well, from grant money.
For the testing.
For the testing.
And that's the special animal testing when we do find something.
Yes. That's, thank you, Julie. Some of you will know more about this than I do. We also have a water research, two specialists working in the water field that are helping with a lot of this work. We're also applying for an agricultural management assistance grant through USDA NRCS that's going to be due in, on August 16th. And that's to help with water quality concerns as well. And then I mentioned the 319 money previously. I also want to talk a little bit about our work in the Madomic Middle School. We started a program there. It's called our Outdoor Adventure Program. And the goal of this program is to get kids outdoors and active. And we're working during the school day, so we're reaching all the kids. We heard from administrators when we first started up the program, we were thinking about after-school programs and whatnot. And they said, "If you really want to reach the kids who need it most, you need to be there during the school day." And so we changed the program and we're there three weeks every season, a three, a three-week block for four days a week, getting the kids outdoors and active. And some of those kids in Waldaborough have learned to ski with us, learned to ride a bike for the first time. We have 45 fat tire bikes that we trailer to the school and bring, and 60 pairs of cross-country skis and boots that we fit to the kids. And right now, we're working on compass and mapping skills, getting kids outdoors and active. And what we've, there's some incredible stories. Sometimes I go up to the AmeriCorps crew that is delivering these programs and just say, "Can you just tell me a story to lift my spirits?" And every time, they have a story about a kid from Waldaborough, from Whitefield, from Liberty, who are, who, they've had an impact on their lives. Indeed, I'm going to give you each one of my, our newsletters, and there's a story about one or two kids in here whose lives have been impacted by some of the programs that we're doing.
I have to tell you, your AmeriCorps volunteer, I forget his name now. Jason?
Aiden.
No.
Joe Chapman?
Joe. Is it Joe?
Oh, oh, Andy, Andy Beza?
He's from New Jersey.
Oh, Jonathan Elspach?
Yes.
Yes.
Very nice.
Yes. Yes, he's a wonderful, wonderful.
They're all very nice.
Yes. Well, we, we, it's a great place to work and we have some great folks.
I was there. It's a beautiful building, too.
Yes. We were very fortunate to get that building. So there's a story in there. And then I'm also going to hand out a little promotional material that we have to help, one of the things we'd like to do, we want to create an outdoor adventure program that's sustainable through the years. And so we're recruiting volunteers to help, we would like to train them to help implement and they can actually check out the gear and bring them to communities themselves. So gym teachers, you know, other volunteers, we're really focused on them and I'll hand that out as well. And I've got some few things about events that we do. We get, we just get people outdoors and active as much as possible. And we are thrilled to be part of your community and are looking forward to listening to what your needs are and seeing where we can fit in and roll up our sleeves and help. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to let you know. I've hit my 10-minute mark.
I just want to have a comment and a compliment. When I was there, meeting with Addie.
Yes.
I picked up your, all your trail maps and I have every weekend been venturing off into different trails.
Julie, I am so impressed.
I'm impressed with myself. I haven't killed myself yet. But it's been a lot of fun because I, I've been leaving like at 4:00, 4:30 to get to where my appointed rounds and off I go. And I have been having an absolute ball. And it, the trail maps really helped me. I will tell you that I ended up someplace I should not have been and a gentleman explained I was not in the right place. But it was a nice walk anyway.
An adventure.
It was an adventure with a dog that was not happy to see me.
Oh.
But it was okay. I made friends.
That's wonderful.
But it's been great. So I keep them in my, in my truck so that if I'm in a mood and I just want to go off and walk someplace, I have the trail maps.
Great story. Thank you for sharing.
But it was just different.
Yeah, yeah. One of the things, just to follow up on that, you know, we, we protect 1,200 acres of land and part of the value of that to your community is that it, that land acts as a giant sponge and it filters the water that goes, runs downstream, that ends up in all our rivers and lakes and streams. And so part of the value of protecting that land is also water quality. It's very, very tied together. And it also acts as recharge for our underground water supply. So a lot of us depend on wells and during droughts, having that land protected is really crucial. So thank you for enjoying those preserves.
I did. And now I know that you teach maps and compasses. I probably should take a.
That's probably a good idea. We have people for that. Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
Whoops.
Okay. I really.
I just want to ask a question about, have you met Jody Abden?
I have not.
No. I'm like reading the name tags, so I.
Tremendous shellfish.
Yeah. Oh, fantastic, Abden.
Glenn's partner in crime.
Partner in crime. I've heard a lot about.
Glenn.
In all the good ways.
He's the strong silent type and Glenn's Glenn. Not silent. Not that he's not strong. I don't want to say that publicly. I'll get in trouble.
Yeah. Well, we, we're really looking forward to working with, with all of you and appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
I probably have to scoot out because I'm meeting my husband for dinner, but thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
I think next up is Jen Merritt.
Hi.
Hey.
So I was asked to come in just to, excuse me, to, I guess, read the letter from the state that I'm speaking now as the Comprehensive Plan Committee Chairman because we lost Edward, who was our chairman, and so it's not a happy thing to inherit that, but I'm here to, to do that. So our comprehensive plan for Waldaborough has been accepted by the state. So the Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry thanks the town of Waldaborough for submitting its comprehensive plan for review for consistency with Maine's Growth Management Act. Upon accepting your plan for review, we solicited comments from relevant state agencies and regional planning organizations. We subsequently received comments from the Departments of Transportation, Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, Agriculture, Conservation, Forestry, Health and Human Services, and Environmental Protection. That's a lot of review. Those written comments were attached to our notice of incompleteness. We had to send Max, wonderful Max, sent a bunch of stuff in. In response to the notice and comments, the town submitted plan revisions on May 14th. Those revisions, with those revisions, the plan sufficiently incorporates the elements we identified as being missing from the original submission. We have now completed our review and we're pleased to inform you that we find the comprehensive plan, Waldaborough Comprehensive Plan 2018 with revisions submitted to be complete and consistent with the Growth Management Act. We appreciate the efforts of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, the town staff, and all others who contributed to the plan. Thanks for the skill and the hard work of all involved. It will provide important guidance to the town's decision-makers for years, years to come. Signed by Phil Carey, Senior Planning Municipal Planning Assistance Program. This is a big deal that we finally got this done. It took us three years of meetings and different processes that we went through. And now it's the first time we've had an intact comprehensive plan up to date since 1998. So now we can move forward with the plan and assign tasks and so forth to committees and others in the town, and we can continue to keep it alive, which is what the hope was. The committee was desperately hoping that it would be a plan that would be alive, that we could revisit and make sure that we were moving forward and we wouldn't let it lapse like we did before. So that's this part. And everybody, I'm sure, is happy to, all the people in the committee, I'm sure, are very pleased that we finally got that done. It's really good. Now, my other, okay, in my other role as the President of the Waldaborough Business Association, I thought that the selectmen might enjoy receiving a copy of our Waldaborough summer events. Okay. Never mind. We have the largest calendar of summer events that we have ever had. There are four pages, or almost four pages, four and a, three and a half pages. It, it's kind of amazing. All right. I'll just do this so you guys can see. Whoops. Sorry. So I wanted, I wanted you to know about these. The first page and a half is just June and where these can be found. So we made this as a PDF document. There is a link to pull it up and print it out on the WBA's website, waldaboroughbusiness.org. And it's also on the Waldaborough Business Association's Facebook page, right at the top. I've got it pinned at the top. So if anybody wants to print them out and post them anywhere, or just keep them to remind you what's going on this summer, there's a lot of really fun things going on. Waldaborough Day alone took one whole column.
Come to the dance Friday night.
Come to the dance Friday night, the kickoff dance at the VFW. Excuse me.
Don't forget the clam spectacular on Saturday.
Right, right. Well, we start Waldaborough Day with a pancake breakfast over at Barstow Farm Store and Rising Seas, right in the cider hill farm. Then we walk, right into the Waldaborough Day 5K race, from there into the parade, and then over to 80 Gray with all the events, the historical trolley tours running around during the day, the clam spectacular ends the day in the evening. Oh, I forgot, there's fireworks. There's fireworks, so.
Maybe, maybe not.
I don't even have, all I have is this. I don't even have the whole thing. But it's going to be a big day, I'm sure, and a big weekend. So I just thought it was a very positive thing to have so much going on in town for everybody for the summer. And a lot of it is family-friendly. Just, thanks.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
And ask a question. First of all, thank you to the committee on the comp plan. You guys worked really hard on that and it's a labor activity.
It's dry.
Takes a lot of work.
Yep.
And it does provide a guide for future developments in Waldaborough. That's really important.
Yep.
The second question, the question is, when do we have to do this again?
So I don't know. I know that there, there's a minimum of these, I believe, a comp plan has to be updated at least every 10 years, but, but we had talked at the committee level of maybe doing our own process after five years to keep us on track with our goals. Because the comp plan is like a strategic plan for the town. It's, it's, every business has a strategic plan for growth. It's the same kind of an idea. It's to keep the town moving in the direction that the townspeople, which, by the way, this was voted on, everybody voted to approve this. So we all had a, you know, a say, up or down with, if we wanted to have the comp plan proceed. But it, it's very valuable, I think, to keep us focused on what our, what we set our goals are and keep ourselves moving towards those goals. And if we can do that without waiting like we did, you know, it, it is a smaller job when you don't wait so long and.
Well, part of the problem was we didn't have any consistency.
No, there was no continuity for so long.
So.
Yeah. We started it twice.
Yeah.
But there was just no continuity. It got dropped, so we finally got it done. But it is, it's valuable. Actually, it's valuable to participate in the process on the committee because what you learn, you, you learn so much about the whole town and how it functions and all the parts and moving parts and how important each part is. And so if, if anybody's ever curious, you know, what our, what our town provides for us, that, that is a great way to learn about what it is and how, what it costs, what it costs financially, but what it costs in people, you know, there's a lot going on. There's a lot to think about. So I appreciate.
Thank you.
That opportunity, actually.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. You're welcome. I hope you guys join with some of this. It's fun.
I think we will. Adjustments to the agenda, I believe we have one.
We, we need an executive session.
We need an executive session, so I would suggest that we add it as item 12.2. Convene an executive session pursuant to 1 MRSA 40568 to discuss a personnel matter. Do I have a motion to put that on the agenda?
Sumoed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Citizen comments?
Nope. Nope. All righty. We'll move to the select board comments. I think you have something you wanted to read.
Yeah. I'm going to have Julie read it. She's, she's a much better reader than I am.
It's just an announcement. The Davis girls, Josie and Sophie, are, on June 22nd at 7:00 PM, having music on the Madomic. It's a celebration of the Madomic River and the working waterfront with music and imagery. Through imagery, music, and story, music on the Madomic captures the ways the river supports local fisheries from clamming and lobstering to ice fishing and the alwife run. Also, elvering and lots of other things. And there are going to be some, I know they collected a lot of different photographs. Justin Hills are, Shellfish Warden's been intricately involved, providing them with information. So it should be a really nice evening, so come out. And it supports the.
Broad Bay.
Broad Bay Congregational Church. And they have great acoustics.
The music is stellar.
And their music is excellent. Yes, and the musicians are also Colin Wheatley and J. Wiley. And we saw them last year and they were excellent. It's a lovely evening.
What's the time, please?
7:00 PM.
At the church?
Yep, June 22nd.
And it will be packed. So come early and get a seat. Katie, did you have something?
I have millions of stuff, but it's too late. Well, I was going to say, I hope everybody gets a boat today, but it's too late.
There's still about a couple hours.
Yeah. And Waldaborough Day, come out for Waldaborough Day. It's going to be a lot of fun.
Okay. I just had a couple of things I wanted to talk about. You know, we talked last, at the last meeting about LD 1323. That was, we call it the seaweed bill, the intertidal zone bill. Passed the House, 72 to 70, yesterday. Failed in the Senate for the second time, so the bill is dead. And we're trying to figure out what to, this was an important bill for Waldaborough. It should have gone through. I know Dana supported it, but he only had seven other senators along with him, 28 voted against it. So it's an uphill battle in the Senate. But what this bill would have done is make the intertidal zone, that area between high tide and low tide, a part of the public trust in Maine. And people who have private property and claim to own part of the intertidal zone, and Maine is inconsistent, no two deeds are alike. Some deeds say you, you own in the intertidal zone and others say you don't. So the, the effort of the regu, of the bill was to straighten that out, to make sure people understood that it wasn't a taking. If your deed said you owned in the intertidal zone, you continue to own. But it does allow certain activities in that zone that are recognized as important for everybody in the state, including clam harvesters, seaweed harvesters, recreation, and a host of fishing, and a host of other things. So it didn't go through and it's kind of back to the, back to the drawing board. One very cynical comment was, well, now they're going to have to go out and measure in that zone what they own and put up signs and post it so people will know where they can go and where they can't go. And good luck doing that. Oh, and by the way, the assessors will have a heyday, ensuring that the property is assessed and taxed by each municipality. So something's got to happen. I'm hoping that the next legislative session will do something about that. We did have the art walk on Saturday. It wasn't bad for the first one of the year. I'm sure that future ones will have better attendance. We do have, we've mentioned Waldaborough Day and the clam spectacular, 4:00 to 7:00 at the VFW for the clam spectacular. Clams from Abden, it's going to be wonderful to have real Madomic clams at that event.
Make sure they're clean.
He will make sure they're clean. Are you kidding me?
Wow. Make you go dig them.
I'll dig them. I love to dig.
The Water Department has met a couple of times. We're going to meet again on, on Friday. The public is welcome to these meetings. We're still trying to figure out what to do with that department. I think John Fancy is going to address the, the committee at that, at that meeting. And the LED project, I guess we're still waiting for something from.
CMP.
CMP to tell us what the net book value of the existing arms and lights are. And finally, we are asking folks who are interested in the transfer station committee to submit applications. The committee is being reactivated and we have a lot of important things to talk about on that committee. So if you're interested, please fill in an application and join the transfer station committee. That's all I had.
The only thing I have is I want to talk again about what we're doing as far as we sent out the results of our forum to everybody. Healthy Lincoln called me today with an amazing idea for the summer food program. They are going to have a, some type of a food truck.
Food trailer, I think they call it.
Well, we're working on it.
They're looking for help.
We're working on, well, they wanted a trailer, but then you're going to have to find somebody to tow it. So like a used ambulance or a truck or a van would be better.
Okay.
Like a food truck that would travel to provide free meals to children in Waldaborough. That's huge. We're feeding babies.
It's a great idea.
This is a good thing. And it's a great idea. So we are working to find something, but we will need volunteers for that program, so I just want to throw that out there. So I'm just heartened by a lot of things that this forum has bred, which is goodness and light and help. So I'm all happy.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Consent calendar, is there a motion?
The only, only thing I have in that I just want to make you aware of is I put on the consent calendar, the MidCoast Humane Society. That went up $750 this year.
I was going to have that as part of our discussion.
Okay.
If there's a motion to approval, we can discuss that during the discussion.
Sumoed.
Is there a second? Okay. And then, yeah, as Julie pointed out, there is a contract included in this correspondence.
Right.
It's, it's under $10,000. It's within your right to.
Right. It's $750 increase, so I just wanted to let you know and be aware.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor? Okay. New business, health insurance review. Discuss coverage and providers' quality cost participation levels. We've been wanting to do this for a while now. The current policy we have in place through the MMA is an HRA. It's been around for as long as I can remember. The current policy we have in place through the MMA is an HRA. It's been around for as long as I can remember. And of course, the cost continues to go up every year. The question is, is there a more cost-effective way to provide health insurance to our valued employees, not put us at a competitive disadvantage in getting them and holding them and keeping our, and containing our costs? And I guess what I'm asking for at this point is a, a, an authorization to the town manager and our finance director to explore options and to come back to the board at an appropriate time. Hopefully sooner rather than later because we're getting into the new insurance year soon, and we'll have to make a decision.
Well, July first starts the new insurance year with MMA, so, yeah, it'll take us a while to get it done. And I just, the only thing that I'd like to say is that currently, we're with the MMA, and when we did this last, it was my first year, was that last year?
Two, two years ago.
My first year.
Yep.
We decided to stay with MMA because the private market was more expensive.
I think it's worth reviewing it again.
I don't have a problem with it.
Are you making a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I think we have consensus.
We have consensus, I'm fine with that.
I think we're fine.
Okay, okay.
I think we need a motion.
Ten point two, health insurance for Select Board members.
This was brought up, and I think personally, this should wait until there's, the other two members are here. But this was brought up that, not that you would get any type of compensation or you wouldn't get free health insurance, but that governing body members in some towns do get health insurance, but it would allow you to buy into our health insurance plan.
At your, at your expense.
At the Select Board's expense.
Yeah.
So, I think that's something that we should discuss as an option, and I do think it should be when the other two members are here.
I agree. So, we can table this discussion.
I would table it.
Until the next meeting, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Okay, table two for the next meeting. Property maintenance ordinance?
This was something that Jan Minzy had brought up that she wanted, again, that was on her list of prior, the priorities, that was one of the priorities she gave me. She's not here tonight, I don't know if you want to hold off on that and have that discussion.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, why don't we table it?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Tables, it's going to be a quick meeting tonight. And I guess we have to, we have the old business, the special event detail policy for the police. This is part of the packet we received. We were going to talk about it at the last meeting, but we hadn't gotten it until sort of the last minute, so we've now had time to read through it. I personally have readyed it to go with it, just subject to making some minor, correcting minor nits. There's nothing material in here that I find objectionable at all. What it does is set up a policy for the police department of when they're requested to be present at events to be compensated for. And the rates that they're being quoted in the agreement are fifty dollars an hour for an officer, ten dollars an hour for, per officer for administrative fee, and fifteen dollars per hour as a cruiser fee with a minimum of three hours. That's what they're suggesting.
And these are for events that are not school-sponsored or town events, but these are for if an event is happening in town and you need crowd control or traffic control that you would have to pay for the officers to come in, that way the taxpayers are not paying for it. It's user-based.
So, it wouldn't be Waldaborough Day?
No.
It wouldn't be Oktoberfest?
Or a game at the school.
Or a game, yeah, at the school, yeah. Any, is there a motion on this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, any? Are we all okay with that?
Nothing good I do.
Yeah, I do, too. All in favor? And I guess we have to table eleven point two because we don't have the final agreement from the union yet.
Right, there was a, we had, they were late getting it to us, again, with the revisions that we wanted, and with Jan not being here, there's something I have to go over with Jan and Abden just to make sure they agreed to it. And it is all centers around anniversary date and when your increase happens. So, that's, that's the only thing holding that up.
Okay, is there a move to table this until the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, let's table two for the next meeting. Executive session is the next item on the agenda.
And this is for the Philbrook Fund.
Did you have, before I go in, are there any, does anybody have something they'd like to say before we adjourn into executive session? Okay, we're all set then. Is there a motion to convene an executive session? I would recommend that the motion state both reasons because we're going to have two topics to discuss during the executive session.
All right, make a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to one, MRSA subsection four oh five six F, as Philbrook Fund trustees, to discuss applications if necessary. Two, executive session, one, MRSA subsection four oh five six A for a personal matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.